This meeting to order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting in the Sioux Nebraska governing body. The city of Sioux advised by the Nebraska Meeting Act to conduct any business. A copy of the Nebraska Meeting Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. The participant sign-in sheet is available for use by each citizen addressing the council. Present your show of course podium, state of name and address with a clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Sioux reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Present.
Beck, here. Canberra.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Pike, here. Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hans.
First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of November seventeenth, twenty fifteen.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Sing none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes for Wilkin, Beck, Canberra, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
Item number two is consideration of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sing none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes for Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Canberra, Beck, and Wilkin.
Okay, item number three, this is the election of president of the city council, and we have, go ahead, you're gonna distribute the votes. And then, what we will need is for someone to nominate, a council member to nominate either another council member or him or herself for the office, and then once the nominations are, are complete, then we will take a vote. Yes.
Nominate Chris Schmidt.
We have one nomination for Chris Schmidt. Is there any other nominations? Seeing all the nominations. Kelly, do you want to do like community unanimous consent on this, or should we just fill out the, with one nominee?
Fill out the ballots.
Fill out the ballots, please.
Don't look.
Don't look.
Do you have drums on this?
No. Well, you can. I'm not much of a drum drummer. It really keeps time. We have seven ayes for Chris Schmidt, for president of the city council. Congratulations, Chris. Item number four, update on local emergency operations plan orientation and emergency management activities. Gary, you're welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come visit with you. Each county is required to have a local emergency operations plan. I delivered a revised copy to each of the cities and villages in both counties. Since I'm the emergency management director for both counties, I've been going around to all the cities and villages in each county and just talking a bit about the local emergency operations plan. It, it's basically a guideline if disaster occurs. The major section, they're all important, but at the NHA is the direction and control. It kind of lists the local communities' responsibilities during an incident. But it also gives, lists individuals and the roles that they may play. And this is just a, a sample of Siouxers. Once again, we'll go and do an update this spring, you know, usually in January or February, so I'll visit with Bruce and Bonnie and kind of go through this again. The one recommendation I may make is not to put a person in more than one area. I know Bonnie's in a couple, three different areas, and her is clerk. She's really going to be busy just in that area alone. And that's one thing we found out Beaver Crossing, that people try to do too much. They try and take on too many responsibilities. And then, once we get to about the third day, that they're just burned out, and they don't have anybody to replace them. And so, that's the whole key, is to have people in those positions that can do that job, but also have somebody that can replace them too. You'll find out that people, they try and go and go and go, and doesn't Beaver Crossing, people that were helping out had their own homes that were damaged, and they let them go for a couple, three days, but they eventually had to, you know, kind of work on their own too. So, and remember that any time we have a disaster, that it's local. The mayor and the city council have all control and responsibility for that incident. I'm a resource. I'll come in and provide recommendations and assistance, but I don't make handed to decisions. That's up to the mayor and the city council. It's the same way if the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency comes in. They're a resource. The first thing we're going to do with a disaster is to get a disaster declaration signed. I get one signed by the county board chair, but all, if it's limited to within the city of Sioux, it'll also have one signed by the, the mayor here for the city of Sioux. What that does, that disaster declaration, makes us eligible for state and possibly federal resources if needed. So, first of all, it's going to go to state resources, and that's where NEMA comes in, comes in with Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. And they're a valuable resource. They're not going to tell you what to do, but they'll come in and help you assist with that process. And if we get a federal disaster declaration, that's when FEMA will assist also. And that's when reimbursement comes into play. Once that incident occurs, we get that disaster declaration signed and start documenting things, everything that's done right away. Because that's all, most of that's reimbursable down the road, you know, if you do get a federal disaster declarations. And that reimbursement's key to anything. And a couple of positions that aren't in here are debris management. That's going to be huge in disaster. That was huge in Beaver Crossing, and it's going to be huge here, especially if it's a tornado type of incident or that type. So, you need to find a place to put the debris, you need to sort it, and you have somebody to manage it, so it's, it's really quite a process. But if you have somebody in place ahead of time, it makes it go a lot easier. Another thing to consider is donations management. You're going to get monetary donations, and it's good to talk to your attorney as well as your bank, and get something set up. Get a process set up ahead of time. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but I think if the money's given to the city, in particular, that money has to be used by the city. You can't give it out to the residents, and, but that's a good question for your attorney and your banker. The things you can do ahead of time to get things lined up, it's going to make the process a lot easier, you know, if something does happen. And that pertains to monetary donations as well as material donations. The one thing that people like to donate right away is clothes, and that's the worst thing you can get. People that have lost everything don't want somebody's cleaned out closet. And if you get clothes donations, you have to have somebody handle it, sort it, be around to help give it out, and it's just more of a pain. So, it's, it's best if you can request, you know, cash donations, gift cards, something like that, if you're going to give it out, you know, for people that need it. Clothes are really a problem. Salvation Army and Red Cross and all the church organizations came to Beaver Crossing. They were awesome. Can't say nothing about Salvation Army. They fed a lot of people coming down through there. And Cradova also got hit, but I checked on them about once a day, and they said, you know, we're fine. All they really had was tree damage. They didn't really have any structural damage in Cradova. They did outside of the town. But inside town, it's, it was just many trees. They were without power for six days. Beaver Crossing was out without power for eleven days. NEMA was able to get a generator big enough to help Cradova out until they got their power back on. The damage was a little more significant in Beaver Crossing, so it took eleven days, and the power company is about two and a half million dollars for them to do all the repairs. A very expensive process. Now, there is volunteer management. You're going to get tons of volunteers. Some are desirable, some may not be so desirable. The big thing that occurred within the first couple of days down Beaver Crossing was that the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency brought in the National Guard to help seal off the area, because we had people loading up their trailers and trying to leave with stuff that wasn't theirs, and they should have been taken. So, it's, it's good to get that sealed off. We set up a volunteer center in Utica, and we bused the volunteers down there, most of them. There's some that still came down and checked in down Beaver Crossing. All they needed was a driver's license, and they could swipe it, and we'd bring them out with an ID. So, it showed, yellow, or it was an orange tag, so we knew the papers supposed to be there. If they didn't have one, we'd send them to go get one and check in. But things really went pretty well down Beaver Crossing. For a community that's never been through it before, and for volunteers, and everybody within there. And I can't say nothing about the volunteer fire departments. If it wasn't for them spotting and everything, I mean, it couldn't have been like that. We did have major losses of life or major injuries. But that's throughout the county. We're all volunteers, and they're great assets, really a big supporter of them. I put together a few document go-kits, that I'll give them out to all the communities too. Basically, those are FEMA documents. If we do get federally, or eligible for federal reimbursement, they're documents that need to be completed. But initially, we can write them on a piece of scratch paper, just so it's documented. If you request a resource, it's going to be huge that you say that you requested that resource. Who requested it? And are they going to charge you for it, or are they donating their services? It's kind of probably mandatory at Beaver Crossing that the county donated some resources, and then they said they didn't request us, so we weren't eligible for reimbursement. They didn't seek FEMA reimbursement anyway. So, that really kind of put a bind on all the people that helped out down there. It is a lot of paperwork, but it, in most cases, it's worth it. You are probably going to get questions if a disaster occurs, also on individual assistance. That's residential properties. There's really nothing available to help out those individuals. I mean, you're supposed to have insurance. That's the first thing to go to, whether it's, even if it's a public building, you know, they're going to look, you know, what you have for insurance first. You have to have a major loss of property for individuals to get any individual assistance, like Alum. But from what I've heard from NEMA, the Small Business Administration is actually a better way to go anyway. It's than the individual assistance that's available, so, if it ever is available, so. Small Business Administration can get loans, loans to homeowners and help them out. The one thing we did at Beaver Crossing, they put together a long-term recovery team, made up of volunteer organizations and churches that have funds available to help out those that may not have had any insurance or didn't have enough insurance. So, we, they helped out quite a few people down there after that, helped put over us if they needed it, or draw all those, things like that. We also revised our hazard mitigation plan, and if you have any hazard mitigation projects for the city of Sioux that you'd like to see, it can be sirens, generators, some flood control projects are eligible. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent cost share on those, so it's a pretty good deal. It just kind of depends on, you know, the fundings available, but since the city of Sioux participated in that process and revising that, you know, they're eligible for any type of those projects also. We tried to do a safe room project for rural residents, but we didn't have much interest at all here in Sioux County to do that. We're just going to put together a county-wide application. Well, we are doing one in York. We have about seventeen people over there that have shown interest in doing it for residential and small businesses. Once again, we'll pay seventy-five percent, up to circle out, about ninety-nine hundred over ten thousand in that area. So, we'll pay seventy-five hundred of that. One thing that we're going to do, and also be sending out letters to all the cities and villages, on January eleventh, up here at Harvest Hall, we're going to do a tabletop exercise. I'd like to get as many council members there that can come, as well as essential personnel, public works, a couple from the fire department. And what we're going to do, we're going to do a tabletop exercise, which is a discussion-based exercise on a tornado. The tornado occurs, this is what happens, you know, what is your response going to be? And it's, it's a good way to kind of walk through it and talk through it, and there's, you know, no right or wrong answers, but we're just going to kind of go through the lead up to and assist with that, and have any questions. We're going to have each community there, hopefully, so we'll have about ten there. Each community at their own table and kind of discuss it, you know, within their own little groups. I think it's going to be a great way to find out, you know, exactly what's going to take place, you know, if something does occur. And I keep talking about natural disasters, but, you know, we have an all-hazard plan. It could be anything. There's different sections in the emergency operations plan. There's hazmat incidents, you know, and there's others also. That's what we usually worry about the most is natural hazards. And just to wrap up, we are, if you get out in the country, the rule signs that the fire departments rely on are faded out, and we are getting new ones to replace those. That's just for the rural residents out in the country. But if the sun hit them, they're, you can't beat them anymore. And so, the company agreed to replace them. They did them all, but they did them all with the wrong colored backgrounds, and now they have to do them over again. They won't be too happy about that, but it wasn't our fault. The National Emergency Management System, the NEMS, they still recommend that anybody that's involved in disaster, that's council members and its employees, complete the one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred courses. Those are online courses. It can be done. If you've done it once, you don't have to do it again. Once in a while, there's classes in Sling County. I'm trying to line up one maybe in York County, close to. It used to be we had an exercise training officer that he'd come do them for free, and now they charge us. We don't do it as often as we used to. That's a real quick overview, but that local emergency operations plan, the mayor has a copy in as well. It was one of the council's or the city administrator's, but it's for everyone to look at and go through. Welcome to any questions that you may have, but may I?
Thanks. Thanks, Gary. Are there any questions for Gary? Yes.
You have my curiosity. Where would you put debris?
Well, they, FEMA recommends, or they highly recommend that it goes on public property. So, that's going to be up to you to decide what the city of Sioux owns, you know, whether it be a ball field, you know, you can get, you know, that may be your best bet, you know, for the area it's going to take. And that's what they did down there, you know, at Beaver Crossing, but they don't like to see it on private property. And, and the, in that go-kit, I'll make, I'll make sure that Bonnie gets the go-kit. I think I gave it to her already. In there, there's also a, it shows the different debris that need to be separated out, as well as you really can't, you're not supposed to pick it up from private property, but if it's in there, the city right away, it goes. So, that's where most of the people put it, and it works out fine. You know, it just goes in the pile. It has to be separated out. But, you know, it does take a lot of area, because especially, you know, because your trees have to be separated out, your structural lumber, your white goods, your hazardous materials, everything, your tin, recyclable materials, so it's quite a process.
I lived through Hurricane Andrew, so, yeah, I'm kind of familiar with this. But curious, if, if something happens in the city like a tornado, it likely might happen throughout the county, or at least affect parts of the county. Explain the process of working with the city versus, and the county working together, who takes jurisdiction lead, who is the spokesperson, et cetera?
Well, if it happens within the city of Sioux, for the most part, the mayor or whoever you designate as a public information officer, that's where all the information can go through. Should have one designate person to do the speaking for the city. And, you know, news media, not a problem particularly. You know, if it's a major incident, you're getting major news organizations in there, and they're going to want to talk to anybody that can. And the, the big thing is to get accurate information out. You know, there's stuff on Facebook. I don't have Facebook, so a bit of people were telling me that it was incorrect, you know, so we have to get it out to the public. You know, like I said, we're just getting clothes donations. We didn't want that, so we have to get that out there. Do not send clothes and stuff like that. Yeah, but as far as, like I said, you guys have the all-control responsibility. If you want the county's assistance, or if you want another community's assistance, make that request. You know, and if they can, I'm sure they're going to help. But there's, in some of the major instances, we didn't realize we had that problem down there. But like in the wildfires out west, they were getting, fire departments showing up, and they weren't requested. I mean, and they send them back home. So, if you get people that aren't requested, and you don't want them, just tell them, you know, we don't need you right now, you know, maybe later or something like that. Nobody's going to tell you how to do it. They may make recommendations, but don't let them tell you to turn them charge, because they're not. Mayor and the city council, it's a charge they had. But like I say, if you're going to request something, document it. That way, it covers you, it covers the person you're requesting, and there's no question that that took place.
This is Chris.
John, or Josh, or Bruce, if you know, based off how long you've been here. Is this, A, is the plan online anywhere? And B, our response team, or whatever you were referring to when you started out, where Bonnie was on three areas, whatever path, the response team, whatever we call it, is at least that documented somewhere? I mean, the, the biggest thing we go through at the bank, we do DR, is everybody's going to have their own issues to deal with, and who really knows what's supposed to happen and where's it kept? Because tornado comes through here, and the front side up here is gone. Who knows what's next? You know, who's next in line to execute the plan?
I don't know if it's online.
I don't think it's online, but we've got.
The Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, they do have them online. I haven't checked to see if the last one of ours is up there. The one thing they don't have, though, in there is the direction and control, the ELC staff, and that. They don't want, because in here, you know, there's cell phone numbers and names and home phones, and we don't want that out there in the public, you know, these. Even though all the communities have these, you know, in the fire departments, each fire department has a copy. I have multiple copies, and I have, the Red Cross has a copy, Health Department, Public Health Department, Hospital.
So, there's a resource to go to that would have.
Yep, there's a lot of people that have, and I've got it on, you know, my computer, so if we have to print off new copies of this, we can. You know, I try to keep it updated too, so. Yeah, like I say, you know, I'm a resource. The Nebraska Management Agency, they like the local governments to go through the emergency manager, make a request. Sometimes they'll make requests, you know, you know, but it doesn't have to go through me, but they, they like for us to keep up, be kept updated on what's going on.
So, we, we have the incident where there is an emergency. I mean, are you just automatically showing up, or are you requested?
Most likely, I'll be showing up anyway. I'll be, like Beaver Crossing, I was down there helping spot when that went through. And just before it went through, I was at the top of the hill east of Beaver Crossing, and Scott Peterson, he's the fire chief. I met him on the hill, and he was heading down to his home, so on the west side, or east side of Beaver Crossing there. And then I knew I was going to be able to see him, so I kept heading east, and then when I came back, and it already went through. He rode it out in his vehicle at home, took all his windows out, and then. They're fortunate they sit down a little bit in the valley there, otherwise, I think, because all the homes up on top, those are the ones that got covered damage. Same way around Cradova, those are the ones out in the country that were, that really had the damage destroyed, so. You know, but if you don't see me, make sure you call me, but normally I'd keep an eye on the weather, and if I'm around, that's for sure. I'll keep you watching, so.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you for the update.
Yep, and you're always welcome to get in touch with me anytime you need to, so.
Item number five, approval of request for public fire proposals and qualifications for purchase of Sioux country farm.
According to the state statute, if we're going to borrow money from a, from a bank, we have to solicit proposals. So, any bank in town or any bank in ground can submit proposals to us for borrowing money, as well as bonding companies, we want them to also, because one of the rules in the statutes is, we have to show that either the bond company can't get the money to us fast enough for what our needs are, or it's more expensive to borrow from a bond company. And we've discussed it with a couple of banks that are interested in, in loading the money. So, we put together this RFP, and it's pretty much based on how the county went out for their RFPs from the jail. But I guess my recommendation is go ahead and go for the whole three fifty. To do it for seven years, that's, that fifty thousand dollar range is what we were thinking about paying for. And I, I'd rather have us do this than try to pay cash for it at this time. I'd just feel more comfortable doing it this way.
Any questions or comments in the council? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the RFP, RFQ.
Give a motion, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Sing none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes for Wilkin, Beck, Canberra, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
All right. Item number six, consideration of new and amended job descriptions for Sioux golf courses. And you can see this in your packet. We can discuss it further, but I think you need to do each one separately. So, unless there's any questions or comments, we will look for motions on, on A, which is the amended park, recreation, cemetery director.
All we did here was we added golf courses into the essential duties and things. Sweetie Josh, you need a?
And motion to approve.
Change of the description?
The new job description.
The new job description.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sing none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes is Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Canberra, Beck, and Wilkin.
Item B, this is a new job description for a golf course ground superintendent.
Do you want to review all the process that went through?
Well, what we did was we went out and we looked at first-class cities that had golf courses, and then we sent out a request to them saying, hey, if you've got job descriptions, we'd like to see them, and then what your pay scales are, so we'd have something to base ours off of. And so, we took those job descriptions and kind of built our own. And so, that's how we came up with this job, the grounds superintendent, as well as the golf shop manager and the seasonal employees. We kind of Frankenstein'd those from other towns.
Was there any cities in our comparability areas that have this type of process? Or, say like Nebraska City, we use, you know, York. Any of those fit into any of those titles?
Yes, like, well, like we've used La Vista's, and we used, well, Garing's out of our range, but we, we tried to get the towns that are closer to us that are city-owned, but most of them around us are private. I'm trying to think of all the towns that we had. We had to go out a little ways just to find ones, but Columbus has several. They have two golf courses, and like I said, La Vista, I think we used Belleville, Bellevue. Was it Nebraska City one? We went for Nebraska City, but they didn't send us anything. There's some towns didn't. Garing sent us theirs, Sidney sent us theirs. Because like I said, I think there were ten first-class cities in the state that have golf courses. So, that's where we went out to try to find these. So that's why we went out to try to find these.
Any questions or comments on item B, are we entertaining a motion to approve the job description?
I move to approve the job description.
Is a motion and a second, we're going. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes for Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
Item C is also a new, uh, job description for a golf shop manager. And essentially this is the, the person who would be responsible for the business side of the non-restaurant, non-ground portion of the, of the enterprise. Um, and typically the person's going to be the one that you would, you know, pay for the greens fees and would manage the tournament or the, um, league play. I mean, that's the business side of it is what this position would be.
Any questions about this? Motion to approve, second.
A motion to approve in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Camper, Beck, and Wilken.
And then D is also new, it would be, um, golf shop seasonal employee.
I move to approve the golf shop seasonal employee.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
And then item D, this is amending the current public property slash recreation, um, in-street summer laborer to include golf, summer laborers. Any discussion, questions?
I move to approve the amended, uh, description.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
Item thirty-seven, consideration ordinance amending the comprehensive pay plan effective January first, twenty sixteen. Bruce, did you want to pick that?
Yeah, basically all we did on these job is we changed the people that were at minimum wage up to the new minimum wage of nine dollars an hour that goes into effect January one. So like library clerk, city center living caretaker, um, the, uh, lifeguards, those are the ones that we changed. So, and I guess there was a question about lifeguards, if we should raise them all the way up to nine. That, the thoughts were that that's what the people voted for, so.
Technically they're exempt as far as requiring minimum wage. So a new minimum wage goes into effect, they would not automatically receive the minimum wage. And our discussion was, the, the voters voted for a minimum wage, and, um, we went and ran it to the council, but the council decided if you wanted to pay that minimum wage to the seasoned employees that aren't required to, but who are required to, um, to be paid a minimum wage, but the thought is that you should have that consideration, so.
And then we also have then in here too is the golf shop seasonal employee, um, the golf course superintendent and the golf shop manager, we've added those in there. The superintendent and the manager are, um, exempt employees, so they just get paid, you know, monthly or a salary. And then obviously the seasonal employee is just hourly, and we're gonna keep those seasonal employees, you know, under, uh, under the amount that we have to pay benefits.
Any questions? As well, otherwise, I, and this is actually an ordinance, so I would need, um, true. I would need someone to introduce the ordinance unless you have any questions.
Can I introduce your ordinance?
An ordinance to provide for classification of officers and employees of the city of Sewer, Nebraska, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compen- compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is here, and is designated as ordinance number twenty fifteen dash seventeen, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with statutory rule?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
This is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash seventeen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I move.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, shall ordinance number twenty fifteen dash seventeen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Camper, Beck, and Wilken.
This is the only ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
Nice, thank you, and number eight, city administrative report?
The report's in your packet, uh, about the only thing, I'll answer any questions, but we will set up a special meeting on December twenty-first at seven. And, uh, right now, the only thing that'll be on that agenda is the MPPD contract. We'll have, uh, JK Consulting will be here to give the report to the council, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure MPPD, MPPD will be here also. Obviously, they'll make a proposal themselves, and, so, it just kind of worked out, that was the only time that we could really do it before the end of the year.
Is, what, and what needs to happen at, at that meeting, I mean, were we making a decision to stay, or is this strictly informational, or whether, what, what's happening?
Well, I think it'll be to where you can't make a decision if you want to either stay or, or go to a different company, or we can take it.
Or just not renew before any year, 'cause wasn't there a, if it's before any year, there's concessions of some sort?
What we do is we would give them a, a notice that we're gonna get out in five years, that we're gonna let the contract run out in five years. So we have to give notice by that time, so that'll be part of the discussion too, is, you know, do we want, if we're not ready to make a decision, we'll go ahead and give a notice, 'cause we have to give notice one way or the other by the end of the year, so.
We have to give a notice if we are going to get out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, does not, does not, uh, is there a difference between not taking an action and actually getting out? I mean, if we don't take an action, that means we're getting out?
No, what you do if you say, well, we're not ready to take action, then we still have to give notice. And then we can take action and say, no, we're gonna stay with them. We're giving notice, you, you have to give notice by the end of the year. You know, you're either gonna sign a new contract, or you're gonna say you're gonna get out. But we can go ahead and continue the discussions after the first of the year, and if we decide we're gonna stay with MPPD, then that notice goes away because we're signing a new contract.
So the five-year lead time when you get it?
Yep, that's the way it works, yeah, right. And they, they explained that in detail, didn't they, didn't you? But what we can do is we can ratchet down our take, and by the end of the five years, we can get it all down, only taking fifty percent.
Any other questions about this issue or the report in general? If not, then I entertain a motion to accept the city administrative report.
I move.
Motion and a second.
We're good.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting yes, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, and Schmidt.
Item nine, feature request for council unit or administrative action. Saying none, and item number ten, announcement of upcoming events. We do have on December fifth, from eight AM to eleven AM, the Chamber of Commerce Rudolph's Red-Nose Run from the middle school to Plum Creek Trail. Does anyone else have any announcements of upcoming events they'd like to share? Saying none. Item eleven is a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display this.